To have the clerk announce the meeting and call the roll.
A special session has been called for Thursday, February 26, 2015 at 6:00 PM for Budget's Discussion on Mill Levy. Roll call. Maddox?
Here.
Kane?
Here.
Markley?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Philbrook?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Townsend? McKernan? Murgia?
Here.
Holland?
Here. So tonight, as we're looking at the budget, there's a lot of discussion about Mill Levy, and we've talked about our priorities as a commission. Mill Levy reduction, or tax reduction generally, infrastructure, taking care of our employees, looking at all the different things that are our priorities. One of the things I think that we need to do is kind of drill down, or as they're fond of saying, take a deep dive on the Mill Levy discussion, to get our heads around it in a way, so as we're making decisions, not only this year but next year, we can understand a little bit in terms of what the Mill Levy reduction, or increase or decrease means to our community and to our homeowners. So, Mr. Bach, unless you have any introductory remarks, he does. I'll turn it over to you, and then you can turn it over to Lou.
Thank you, Mayor. In putting together this presentation tonight, the emphasis was really trying to put together, I think, some good information to stimulate your thoughts on this as you go through and think about, you know, one, this slide, as it lays out, you know, just how much is a mill, so you kind of remember your background, and probably what's pertinent on this slide is number three, you know, a mill's worth $916,000 in taxes on the city side, and a little over $1 million on the county side. So anytime we talk about dropping a mill, that's our fiscal impact, that we either reduce services by, or we cut. And then, and then this second section that says, and how many mills do you think you need to reduce before you have a true impact on a citizen? And as you see an annual impact of a one-mill change on the average household in Wyandotte County, it counts to about 77 cents a month. So, that's, you know, you've got to think about, where does that have an impact on a resident if you cut, if they save them 70 cents a month? You know, so, I mean, you start to think about, you cut 10 mills, and you cut, that saves, you know, $8 a month. You know, so is that enough to make an impact on that household at that point, versus if you had $8 million? And I think that's, that's the, kind of the things you've got to weigh out, and think about our impacts on our community, and where we make the greatest impact. And in doing that, Lou put together some good slides that we're going to show up here, that kind of get to showing, as you look at the assessed valuation of our community, comparing it against other communities, and then you compare per capita, how much do we actually charge for taxes, and then show that difference from there. And that, and it puts some interesting things on the table that I think are good for us to look at and kind of talk through. So Lou, I'll turn over you.
Okay. Thank you, Doug, Mayor. Annually, the League of Kansas Municipalities looks at mill rates across the state for both cities and counties, and they release their annual report, and it generally comes out sometime in April and May. And so, this, these two tables reflect the 2013 mill rate that influenced, or the revenues generated from the 2013 rate were used for the 2014 budget. And so, how did we compare with other communities in the state? On a county level, our county mill rate is actually relatively low compared to other counties. The rate in 2013 was 36.5 mills. It was the 96th highest, meaning there were 95 counties in the state that had higher mill rates. Then you see in the table what the county average and medians were. In our 2014 budget, we did, we did increase the county mill rate to 2 mills, and we offset that with a 2-mill reduction on the city side. The table below shows the city mill rate. Again, it's 2013, at 45.5 mills. Among first-class cities in Kansas, there's 25 first-class cities. We were the 10th highest, so a little bit above the middle of those 25 cities, but we weren't the highest tax rate among cities, or nor were we the lowest. What I've done in the next set of slides, I've tried to give us a little bit of a different perspective, and we're going to look a little bit at assessed valuation, and how it impacts, how much revenue's generated in assessed valuations, really the tax capacity or the tax base of the community. So, in this particular slide, we see the assessed valuation of Kansas, of selected Kansas cities, and we tried to look at the larger ones in the metropolitan area. They're primarily Johnson County cities, but we included Lawrence and Leavenworth, and then, for a little broader statewide perspective, we got information on Wichita and Topeka. So, the numbers that you see here, if I can find where this goes, there we go. The yellow highlight for Wyandotte, or for Kansas City, shows that our assessed valuation per capita is a little over 6,600. And at the high end, you see Overland Park and Lenexa, almost 16,000 and 18,000. So, that tells, tells one, when you look at these tables, that we almost have to have, increase our tax rate, or our mill rate, two to three times to generate the same amount of revenue on a per capita basis. The next slide, we're looking a little more closely at that. So, based on the 2014 mill rate and the assessed valuation from the previous slide, we see that in Kansas City, we'd levy 42.8 million in taxes, and how does that compare to the other cities? We show those relative totals, and then divide it by population to look at per capita basis. Kansas City generally falls really towards the middle of those cities. There's a group of cities from, even from Topeka down to Olathe, that are sort of in that mid-range. Lenexa, significantly higher in taxes levied per capita, and Overland Park and Leavenworth, significantly lower. Similar comparison for Kansas counties, again, what you see here, and these are the largest counties in the state of Kansas, our assessed valuation per capita, which is a measure of our ability to generate property tax revenue from our tax base, on a per capita basis, it's lower than each of the other five counties that we've compared it to. Someone really close to, or is reasonably close to Sedgwick, Shawnee, and Leavenworth. Douglas in Johnson County, significantly higher. You see in Johnson County, their assessed valuation per capita is over two times as great as Wyandotte County.
Can you just go back, can you just go back for a second?
Sure.
That slide is astonishing. So, Johnson County has $8 billion in total valuation. Sedgwick County, which is not much smaller, has half that valuation, and we have an eighth of that valuation with a third of the population. That's a pretty, when Wyandotte, when Johnson County is ranked as one of the wealthiest counties in the country, that's why.
Yeah, I think that's where, I think we need to be cautious if we compare ourselves to mill rates in Johnson County, or cities in Johnson County. They, it's a different type of community, a different measure of wealth, it's just a different makeup. So, that's, to me, it's not necessarily a fair comparison. So, again, here, we're looking at taxes levied per capita, and the question to me is, are we spending more money on a per capita basis in Wyandotte County than these other counties? And you see, we're actually pretty close with, you know, the bottom four there, Johnson, Leavenworth, and Sedgwick. Actually, Shawnee and Douglas County are spending significantly higher than we are. And you should also begin to think, you know, there's, you know, we might have different demands than some of the other communities. We might have, we might spend more on public safety than, on a per capita basis than Johnson County, or a suburban county. And so, those are other factors to consider. Some, I think, one thing I want to know, for Johnson County, we included their county parks and recreation levy. So, someone might look at the Johnson County mill rate, and it's actually 2.3 mills lower than that, but they have a separate county parks and recreation levy that's assessed county-wide. That's why we added that in, in this table. The other big revenue is sales tax revenues. And the state publishes, and it's based on the state calendar year. So, we got, looked at totals from July of 2013 through 2014 of sales tax revenues in each city, and then the following table for each of these counties, and compared those revenues. And then, and what that tells us is, if you levy a local sales tax, where are you going to get more bang for that sales tax? And so, we have a slightly higher sales tax rate with our dedicated sales tax rates, for dedicated sales tax, and the EMS sales tax, than other communities. But some of them are pretty close, you know, within a tenth of a cent on the city side. And then, but how much revenue's generated? The yellow, they're, we're showing two different lines here. The yellow line shows what our total sales tax collections were, and the green line shows without star bond revenue, because we don't have access to that star bond revenue till it's paid off. So, you see, you know, that 231 number on sales tax revenue per capita, that really represents a number that we're going to have in the future, once sales tax, or the Village West star bonds are paid off. Today, we're really living with, or our budget's based on that $160 per capita that we receive. And you see, even though we have a higher sales tax rate than other counties, the amount of revenue we receive from that city sales, those different city sales taxes is on the low end. There is one striking difference, Wichita, and I'm not familiar in detail with their budget, they do not have a local city sales tax rate. They do have a county sales tax rate. The final slide, similar side, slide for counties. Wyandotte County, again, if we're in the middle, when you include the star bond revenue, seven, over 7 million in star bond revenue was collected on a county basis. You take that out of the equation, we're down to $105 per capita, again, less than half of Johnson County. So, it tells me, Johnson County, they're able to have a lower mill rate. They get more sales tax revenue from the sales taxes. They levy their assessed valuation, as the mayor pointed out, is eight times as large as Wyandotte County. So, when they levy a mill, they're getting more out of that mill than we are. And so, I just think, these are just two different ways to, you know, when you look at sales tax revenue, and the tax base is measured by assessed valuation, to give a more complete context to the mill rate discussion. And I think with that, if there's any questions here, I'm going to have Mayor's going to-
Show me, go back one slide. So, that shows $11 million difference in star bonds. 10 million. And then go to 10.6, thank you.
Yeah.
And then go back to the next one.
Back or forward?
There you go. Thank you. Forward. And that shows eight-
7.2.
Seven.
It's in the superintendent's table.
Sure enough, 7.2. So, if you add those two together, why won't, why won't we see all of that when the star bonds pay off? Add those two added together.
Well, some of the money's going to go to Bonner Springs and Edwardsville, for one. Then the other major part is what's called in Kansas, destination sourcing. And under the current star bond legislation, if there's any retail sales in the star bond district, those sales, if they have deliveries associated with them. We have a major retailer in our star bond district that delivers furniture and appliances. And once those, once the star bonds are paid off, those, the sales tax revenues associated with those deliveries will go to the city or county associated with that delivery. So, if I'm an Overland Park resident, and I buy furniture at NFM, and it's delivered to my house, then the sales tax revenue goes to Overland Park. If I have a, if I'm, again, if I'm an Overland Park resident, I have a pickup truck, I pick up the furniture on site, the sales tax stays within Kansas City, Kansas, or Wyandotte County. So-
So, we should ask NFM to increase their delivery rate right about that time.
Their pickup rate. So, when we use the estimate of-
Delivery cost charge.
Yeah. So, yeah, correct. So, when, so when we say the estimate of 12 to 15 million, we're doing an approximate estimate of the impact of the loss of those delivered sales.
And isn't that a relatively new law? Or has it always been that way?
No, it's, the new law was that, related that, for this particular Village West star bond district, the delivery, sales were, are used to pay off star bonds.
Yeah. The law changed since we did our initial issuance of the star bonds in Village West, so it's been within the last decade, because that's why Village West is exempt from the destination, in the sense that all the bonds were sold. So, when the state changed to destination delivery, they had to make an exception for this area, because all the bondholders would have had a case back against the state that it wouldn't repay it at the same rate. So, that's how it was protected.
But it was changed since Nebraska Furniture Mart opened, is that right?
Yes.
And I think that just goes back to, if I could just take a minute, to go back and change the way sales tax is delivered. We pay all the, we support all the sewer, all the roads, all the security, all the fire coverage, all the public safety for this store, to make sure that everybody has a safe shopping experience. And we pay for all the roads, so they can drive there and back. And the state legislature went out and distributed the sales tax for that store that we're supporting to all the places where they came from. And I just want to say, I think that's wrong.
I agree, Mayor. Maybe that's one of the things that we can get with our Wyandotte County delegation, and ask them to bring up. And the thing is, because we lose a lot of money by not being able to collect that. And we're the one, like you said, we're the host folks, and the host people ought to get the most.
I agree. All right. Thanks. Thanks, Lou. Continue on.
Okay. I think, Mayor, you were going to pick this up.
Okay. So, this, this slide makes my head hurt, but it's instructive.
Mayor, we will be getting a copy of all this, right?
Absolutely. We-
Thank you very much. You think you had a headache. That did it.
Yeah. So, just, I just start over on the far right side. And this is in our budget book every year. So, this is a familiar slide to us. We see it every single year. But if you look at, Wyandotte County's the red dot, and we're at, what is that number, 81-9?
Yes.
You go down to the blue number, that's Douglas, and that's city-county combined, Lawrence-Douglas, Shawnee-Topeka, Sedgwick-Tuichetah. So, this is combined city-county for the major stakeholders. So, to go down to Douglas is 73, or 72. Leavenworth just lowered their mill levy, because they added a sales tax. So, they're at 67. Sedgwick is at 62. And then to get into the Johnson County cities, you can see how much lower they are than everybody else in the state. Overland Park, of course, is astonishingly low, at 30 mills. So, if we set our goal to have the best city-county, the least expensive city-county mill rate in the metro, we would need to drop our mill levy by $51 million. Is that right?
Be a significant drop in revenue.
I'd say that's significant. I'd say $51 million is significant. So, one of the things I want us to think about is, what is a target mill levy that we would feel good about? Right? Now, obviously, I'd love to have ours at 30.5. But dropping $51 million out of our budget, which represents, well, what is it, 300, how much, what percentage would $50 million be? That's almost 20% of our budget? Eight, 15%?
15, 16 would be, yeah.
We'd have to reduce our budget 15 or 16% to get down there. To even get into any of the Johnson Counties, we have to get close to 50. And that's still a $40 million drop in, in revenue. So, the question is, just so we're realistic in terms of what we're talking about, what is a realistic mill levy, combined city-county, that would get us to a place where we would feel good about it, and feel like we're doing well? You see the dilemma? You almost have to take Johnson County cities off, because they're not, it's a national anomaly, the valuation in that, in that county. It just happens we're adjacent to them. But if we live in our world of Douglas County, Sedgwick County, Shawnee County, Leavenworth County, that's sort of our neighborhood, how do we, how do we think about ourselves competitively in terms of that group? So, I just throw the question out for discussion. But I think it's, we just have to drill down into this. So, when we're talking budget time, we want to raise or lower mill levy. We just need to have, we just need to be thinking about what our goal is. Can you speak directly into the microphone, please?
Yeah, I'll just add one thing, Mayor, if I may. You can see here, if I go back, I think I'm at 2008, 2009. Among those counties you just selected, or mentioned, we're sort of in the middle of our comparable ones. But here, you know, we start, who is most affected by machinery and equipment changes? You know, I think the recession affected all communities. It did hit us hard, but, you know, our need to adjust the mill levy was seemingly a little greater than those other counties.
Mr. Walker?
A number of years ago, we did a, for part of our budget presentation, and Lou, you may recall-
may recall this. We had a employee who left here. By coincidence and circumstance, he lived in a house that had been built by a builder somewhat out west. And he bought virtually the identical house by the same builder in Johnson County following a job. And we did a, a graphic and, and pictured demonstration of not only the taxes, but the various other things that you pay for a house in Johnson County. You have sewer district charges and water district charges. And they compared them. And they found that the differential in the cost of the home on a monthly basis was not, they were very close. The primary difference was in the fact that the house in Johnson County was worth between $30,000 and $40,000 more than it is here. It wasn't that they were paying out less out of pocket to live there overall. It was simply a matter of they had a higher value. Do you recall that? It was Mike Howe's house.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't catch who you said it was, but...
Mike Howe.
Okay.
It's been a while.
Yeah.
So I, I, what I'm, my point is, is that, you know, these, these comparisons are difficult because you can't account for all the factors that go into the monthly cost of owning a home and supporting government. I mean, we look at two, two aspects of Johnson County and the various cities, but we don't have what they pay in sewer service charges. We don't have utility costs per kilowatt. We don't have these other comparative points that I think narrow the gap between them. The value is, is, is the primary difference.
That's right.
You build the identical house on the same lot with the same trees and same shrubs, and they're going to be totally different in value because of the location.
I think, Commissioner, you hit it right on. And Lou, if you go back to the other slides, when you show per capita tax, that's really what this gets to, you know, when you start saying that. You're, because the per capita you have, well, not the sales tax revenue, take us back to the assess, yeah, the per cap taxes levy, when you're at, you're looking at some of these other areas and you say, well, their value, their taxes levied are 162 million, let's say in Johnson County. So your taxes levied per capita is 287. That's accounting for the fact that that resident is paying for that much more in a household. So I think, I think this does a, a lot to capture kind of what you're getting at and show like, how much, well, it shows right there, what a resident, you know, what we are capturing per resident. And it's right in the ballpark, probably with the other communities. So our tax rate's higher, we're not necessarily collecting any more per resident than the surrounding communities. And granted, when I say resident, you have to say commercial too, because it goes across both sides.
And some of the communities, there's different services too. This particular government provides trash service. There's a charge for it. But in, in some of the suburban communities, the, the individual household has to contract with a firm to do their trash pickup. There are some fire districts that are not associated with the cities in, in Johnson County. They're, they're more of the, the smaller cities, but there are differences.
Another key piece, and I think you mentioned machinery and equipment tax loss. Lou, I believe you brought us numbers last budget year that said, on average, over each of the last 10 years, we've lost about $6 million in state revenues. About a $60 million loss between the ad valorem, they have a, a local ad valorem tax balancer that they haven't funded in years, it's still on the books. The machinery and equipment tax, which they took away and didn't do the slider. If you look at the loss of state revenue over time and losing $60 million, if you think about, if we had that $60 million of revenue, or the $6 million additional per year, I mean, that's six mills. That if we had, if we could reduce our mill relate by six mills, that would represent what we've lost from the state. Current number's 11? We're down, okay. 11 million for machinery and equipment. This year? This year. All right. Any other questions or comments about the mill levy conversation? I think as we talk about, as we come into our budget cycle and we start talking about restoring fund balances, services, mill levy, this is helpful to me. Is it helpful to anybody else? Maybe it's not. Yeah.
Excuse me. Perfect movement to cough, right? You know, I think it is helpful, but I think the one thing that we have to keep in mind is, it's easier to look at the numbers than it is to look at our people. And the reason that we see these higher valuations in these other neighborhoods is because they're wealthier neighborhoods. So the impact of the tax on our poorer residents is more significant than a tax increase would even be in one of these Johnson County neighborhoods because they have the disposable income to begin with. You know, before we came downstairs at dinner, I was telling the story of how my husband and I got our current house. And I said, we knew we had to eat ramen noodles every day or we couldn't afford it. And we couldn't even afford to have a Sunday paper because it was too expensive. And as we all know, the Sunday paper is cheap. So the less money you have, the more of an impact every increase is. So we look at this and we, we see the numbers and it seems very logical, but when you look at how it works practically speaking, when we're looking at our lower income residents, it's a big difference than looking at those residents in Douglas County or in Johnson County where they already have more income to begin with.
That's absolutely right. Because you think about, the median household income in Johnson County is nearly three times what it is in Wyandotte County. And so you weigh that, and in lower income communities, there's a higher demand for services. So you have a higher demand, you have lower income, lower valuation, higher demand for services, and less ability to capture that. And not only in the value of the structure, but in the income of the people paying it. I think your point is exactly on. It, it's a, it's a, it's tricky, is the bottom line. Anybody else? Yeah?
Lou, would you go over to the taxes levied per city instead of the counties? Because I guess I looked at this from a, not necessarily how much are we collecting in taxes and our tax rate also, but I think to your point, you can look at the city Lenex up here that's collecting so much more per capita, and you can ask anybody probably that lives in Lenex, and they don't complain about their tax rate. And that city, and it's exemplified here. They're collecting, they're one of the higher ones in Johnson County, but they spend a lot on their community. So you, you also got to look at it from that side of the equation to say, where do you want to be in that spend rate? Do you want to be at the bottom and say that, you, we're going to put in the least we can, you know, for our residents back to improve our community? Or do you go to the top? And it's interesting in the equation that you look at that, you know, one of the, the city that's on the top of this list at far, taxes far more per capita than anybody else, is also thought of one of the, the nicer places to live in the metropolitan area. It's a very clean city. They keep their infrastructure. They're on top of everything. They're building more parks, more environmentally friendly aspects of it. So I think that's the other side of the equation. If you just kind of say, well, set the mill side, and if you didn't even have that on this chart, you start thinking about what your spend rate is per capita to get some return. And when you invest in your community in terms of your curbs and sidewalks and streets and parks and walking trails, you, you start to make big differences in your community as far as the quality of life. And where do you want to be with that versus just minimalizing it and, or not doing it?
Thanks, Mayor. It's really just a comment. So I like Commissioner Philbrook sort of struggle with this sort of, of data. But from a much bigger perspective, what this tells me is, as serving on the Economic Development Standing Committee, what it tells me is that we have really mastered affordable housing in Wyandotte County. And we might want to try to master maybe a little higher-end housing in Wyandotte County to grow our tax base. And I recognize it's a challenge. It really isn't a criticism, it's just an observation. And we have even a, a bigger struggle, Mayor, is that we are bound by county and state lines. Geographically, really, if you look at it in a map, we're very small. We only have so much land. And as an older city, much of that land is occupied. So now we're looking at doing higher-end deals on smaller parcels of ground, which is very challenging. Anyone will admit that. No one is going to argue, no political party, no county is going to argue that that's not more difficult. So I think what it just boils down to is if we really want to change this in the long run, I mean, obviously, we can have this debate tonight, but in the big picture, if we're going to change this in the long run...
Assess value.
We're going to have to buy...
Raise the assess value.
That, well, and at the end, even a bigger picture, this governing body is going to have to take some risk, some significant risk. 20 years ago, the commission that was here took a significant risk to buy 400 acres, am I getting that number right? 400 acres out at Village West. And it was a big deal at the time. Still in some circles, a really big deal. We're going to have to figure out how to do that level of development in other areas of our city to really solve this problem in the long term. That's not the discussion tonight. You're just looking at the next year, but...
Well, I think we, I think we need to look at the next year with that vision in front of us. We can't do them separated. That's why I think it's important to kind of get this information. Because I will say, understanding the mill levy is not, doesn't usually happen in your first six months in office. Understanding the mill levy and how it works and the relationship it has to everything to valuation. You take Overland Park, Northern Overland Park went through a process where they put in, they had a whole stretch of city just like we do, with no curbs and sidewalk or storm sewer. And they went through street by street and put that in and raised the value of every home in front of that street, just by making that capital infrastructure change. And it took them 15 years, I think, to go through all their older neighborhoods and put in that infrastructure. But ultimately raised the valuation of that area. So you can, there's a lot of ways to raise the value. One is investing in infrastructure. And so do we invest in infrastructure and raise the property values? Now, then people get mad if their property values go up. But do you go in and invest in the infrastructure? Where's the best way to impact this? I guess that's the question we need to talk about. Is it to just lower the mill levy and cut services? Is it to invest that mill levy into infrastructure that's going to increase value? Is it going to be to do economic development deals where we're growing the tax base generally? We need to keep all of that in front of us as we're talking about it.
Well, and I'd only add, Mayor, that no matter which one of those you choose or we choose collectively, it's not necessarily going to be politically popular.
Well, I don't think we're talking, we're talking about taxes. We're not talking about politically popular. But it's got to be a balance of all three. I mean, maybe we need all three.
I bring it up because it's going to require the people of our county to be supportive of that. We have developed a county around a, a lower income population. And when we try to change that, for some reason, in my experience, that's been interpreted as not caring about low-income people, and that's not the case. In my opinion, it's our job to have a balance so that we have a stable community. And unfortunately, if you make those hard decisions, there are going to be some people that are negatively affected. Just a comment.
Commissioner Philbrook, and then we're running out of time to get downstairs.
Well, thank you very much. So to piggyback on what, on what this nice commissioner to my left is saying, Commissioner again, is that, yes, we do have a low-income population, you know, if you put it all together. And definitely, we need to increase the population that has a higher income because, and get folks that have the lower income right now making more money, which is why we're working on workforce development. And the schools are changing how they're doing everything. We, as a community, I would say, we have more things going on all at once than I can believe almost any other community has going right now. This group of commissioners has kicked it into high gear on a lot of areas. Now, nobody's taking, you know, nobody's sitting back on their laurels. Everybody's working hard. And I agree with you, we need more higher-income folks living in really nice housing. And I don't care if that's downtown in lofts that they pay full amount on, you know? I don't care if it's in the middle of the city. I want them all over the place because that'll help stabilize things. And it'll make it easier to bring in the things that we need in the northeast part of the city because there's more people to spend money. That's it.
All right.
Could I make a quick?
Please.
Ask a quick question. It's to Lou. Go back to the taxes levied per capita for counties. You know, I think you said earlier, we were 95 out of 105 on mill levy per county or something like that, or 98 or something, which made sense to me. But I guess I, I'm a little surprised that we are so close to some of these other counties because we have almost no county land that's not incorporated into cities, whereas these other counties have vast expanses of ground that's unincorporated that they provide county services for, roads and public safety and all that stuff. Do you have any thoughts on why our per capita cost is so high?
I think, I think that's a good point. The, the smaller rural counties spend more money on streets, road improvements. As an urban county, we probably spend more money on some of the administrative functions, tax collection, appraisal, et cetera, but also the sheriff's side of the budget. You don't, the expense we have related to jail services is higher than other counties. We probably spend more on part, our, our parks department. You know, we have some major county parks that are on the county side, as well as do, you know, certainly, you know, the larger urban counties. But the rural ones, I don't believe have it to that extent. I think, I think it's just a, a different level of services. In some areas, the smaller counties spend more on certain areas and we spend more on, it, it just varies on...
But isn't the other issue too, their total valuation isn't going to be close to a billion dollars in these rural counties in terms of their taxable valuation. So where our valuation's going to be higher, which is going to allow us to tax at a lower rate.
Well, I was just looking at Leavenworth and Sedgwick, which bracket our, I don't know, I think both Leavenworth and Sedgwick have vast amounts of unincorporated land in their counties, right?
Well, they've certainly more than we have, which is minimal.
All right, that's all.
Thank you. Thank you, Lou, for putting this together and food for thought. We are dismissed downstairs to our 7 o'clock.